Good morning. We'll call this committee the whole meeting to order for December 3rd, 2025. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Barnes?
Present.
Mr. Bissette? Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mr. Curran? Mr. Demick? Mr. Fanton?
Here.
Mrs. Hanchett?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Havy?
Here.
Mr. Healy?
Here.
Mr. La Forge?
Here.
Mr. Ricky?
Here.
Mrs. Rickett Swales? Mrs. Roue? Mr. Stocken?
Here.
Ten present, five absent.
Thank you.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Seeking approval of the agenda as presented is their motion. Thank you, Mr. Fanton. Saying my legislator, Hanchett. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, and that's approved. County Administrator. Approval of 2026 wage increments. Good morning.
Good morning. This is an annual resolution. You have to do it every year so that everyone's salaries can be set for 2026 and they receive any wage increases that they're due. So the majority, the first set of paragraphs in this MOE are all about the collective bargaining agreements that we have. And this just says that we will pay the people in those collecting bargaining units what they're due for 2026. And they all have wage schedules. We do have one that is up for a contract. We do not have a contract settled. So when we go to settle that, we'll have to pass another resolution. But at this point in time, they are referenced in here as we do all the time. And then the very last portion of this is all of your positions that aren't in a salary plan already. And so these are kind of a bunch of miscellaneous. A lot of these are your hourly, part-time people. Legislators are also in here. Everyone other than the legislators got a pay increase of some sort. So we also, we do not have to pay minimum wage, but we have set everybody to match the state minimum wage, at least.
How are the non-graded that aren't in the salary plan? How are those determined? How are they set?
I go through them each. And the first, I look to see the ones that are at minimum wage, that they match the state minimum wage because we would have a hard time recruiting. And then the others, I look, there's two stipends. I don't increase the stipends at all. I haven't increased the coroners at all. The other positions, should we fill them? I think we have a couple that are vacant, have not had an increase either. For Health Department, Tyler gives me those numbers. For Employment and Training, Rita and her accountant, Brian, give me those numbers. And for the elections, the Elections Commissioners set those salaries. And as long as you budget them, I do believe you have to do what they have set.
And the tentative can stomach all of these amounts?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments? It's got a motion. Thank you, Mr. Fanton. Saying my legislator, Bissette. Okay. Questions or comments on this? Mr. Healy?
If you'll allow me, just on a sidebar, a little bit, on the coroners that are included in this, and I know we've been struggling with the coroner's positions. They're, I believe, up for election next year, aren't they?
I believe so.
Have we set that for candidates that we know of?
I have no idea. I don't get involved in who runs for office, so I'm not sure.
You haven't heard of any trouble, though, filling those vacancies?
I have not heard of anything from our coroners in quite a long time.
All right, thank you.
That's the extent of their compensation, though, is the per death?
Oh, they can earn mileage as well, and we do buy some limited supplies for them that are related to coroner duties. If they have to go to a training, we can reimburse them for a training. There are some state mandated trainings, too.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, and that's carried. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I have just one question.
Yes.
Real quick. Sorry, Chris. If somebody's looking at this and doesn't realize something like, just for an example, like the deputy election commissioners, that amount is for more than one person, correct?
That is per title. That is set for the title.
For the title.
And some of these titles have more than one person in them. Some of these titles are vacant or will be vacant.
I just didn't want someone to think that that's the amount for one person.
I believe that is the amount for one person.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah. Correct. Yeah.
Okay.
There's full timers and part timers. Or part timers, I put it down, are the part timers set hourly? I believe so.
Okay, you're good. Okay, 26 Budget Amendments. We had a good, long conversation about this last week or the week before. Can't remember now. Does everybody have a copy of the MOE that the county treasurer has prepared for her recommended amendments? It is in the packet? You can do it right from your seat there, Deputy Budget Officer, if you want, or you can come up front, whatever you prefer. Can you just walk us through yours and the Budget Officer's recommendations for amendments?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Yeah, this is a list that was compiled after your last meeting that we compared notes on, and we came up with, these were the suggestions that we needed to make to the budget to get us under the cap. The, I've listed them by account number and by fund, so they're not exactly the way we had the conversations, but there's a variety of things in there. There are some items that departments had offered up. We took advantage of their suggestions. And there were other things that were suggested by administration. So I don't know if you want me to go right through them, or what, you have any questions on, or how you want me to approach that?
I think go right through them, if you would, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
So the first line is really what the levy ended up. After all these proposed adjustments, which by all means, these can be changed, but this is what we've come up with, excuse me, ends up with a levy of $31,743,541. So going down through that, we changed, we had to make some changes to be able to absorb some things that got missed in the tentative that we had to put back in, and some clerical errors, and some other options that were offered up at the last meeting. So we increased some interest in earnings, $750,000. We feel that we can get that dollar amount for our investments. Right now, this year, we're about 3.12 million, and we still have a lot of investments out there that have to be captured from the interest on that. And a couple years ago, we hit the $3.2 million. So even though we try to be conservative on that, we feel like we need that to be able to cover the items in this budget. District Attorney, we removed some positions in there. That amounted to the 110. $100,000 in the Treasurer's budget is for the borrowing needs for the public works facility. Probation, had a grant that came in, that came in higher than what they had put in the budget, so we made that adjustment at this time, instead of having them coming back and having to do it by resolution. The jail, we had to make some adjustments for the food contract, for an outside agency taking over the meals at the jail. The next line item was...
Can I pause you there?
Yep.
I'm sorry. We received correspondence about 15 minutes ago from the sheriff expressing concern about, in particular, that general supply line. He's stating that general supplies is for inmate supplies and cleaning supplies for the jail units, in addition to supplies related to kitchen functions. So that might be one we need to peel off. I just want to make sure I put that out there because he just sent that email out.
Yeah, I think Tim is the one that really did the negotiations on that with the contract price, and those were discussed as a possible savings. I also believe they have some money in their other budget lines. I understand, I understand. Cleaning supplies, I believe, for the jail, they'll come out of a specific Buildings and Grounds account, so I'm guessing that might be some other inmate supplies that he needs for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
It's my understanding that that is, personal supplies, things like toothbrushes and things of this nature for the inmates. So we may have to look at that a little harder. Thank you.
I've got that noted, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Ricky?
If we back up to the District Attorney, he's always been saying they need more help. Did he offer up this, or this $110,000 less on pay? Because I know he's always been saying...
That was based on some conversations that we had with the county administrator.
I did speak to the District Attorney in making these suggestions.
Okay, so he's good with it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The next one was the Health Department. We had removed some money from ZOH's budget, and Tyler came back with some other suggestions, so we changed that around. The next one was a million dollars for MTS that was in the budget at the department head level, and somehow that was a clerical, I will take full responsibility for that. It did not roll into the Budget Officers' column. So we had to make that, and that's why we had to up the interest and take some additional fund balance, is because that got missed at the Budget Officers' level. I apologize for that, but...
We should give ourselves credit for putting it in the tentative this year.
Yeah, well, there you go.
That's good for us.
Yep, yep. So the next one was the airport, and since you didn't have a contract for that, and there was an error on that as well, when that was input, there was revenue put against it, and there is no revenue against it. So that's the correction on that. Bus transportation, there was, we had plugged in some numbers from last year, and there was some additional revenue that could be captured on that, so those are the adjustments to the bus transportation. The next one was some positions that Don offered up for us to cut out of his budget. And Child Advocacy, the next two lines are Child Advocacy Center, one's for the mobile unit and one's for the center itself. Don was made aware that there was some additional funding there, so we ended up wanting to get that in as soon as we could into the budget. And so we did that. The other day, we had a conversation with him, and he was able to capture some $250,000, because there was a big cut, if you remember, in that CAC. So he was able to capture most of that. There still is about, I want to say $65,000 or so that he wasn't able to capture from the original amount, but he said that they're still working on that, so.
Can I ask you a question on that?
Yeah.
So does Cataraugus County have a local share that they apply to support CAC operations?
They do not. Not to my knowledge, they do not.
Is some of our local money finding its way over to Cat County for these services?
Like I said just now, there would have been $300,000 and some thousand dollars. It would have been local money, but Don was able to capture this 250 in '96, so there's about $65,000 that local money's still in there. He'll do his best not to spend all that and keep it within the revenue that he has, but there's a potential that that could cost us $60,000 and some thousand dollars.
It might end up being a subject worthy of a Human Services Agenda item to maybe start communicating with Cat County about sharing the pain on that. Mr. Healy?
Thank you, Chairman. We still maintain a satellite office over there, or no?
I believe we do at this time.
We do. That is actually where the main office is located.
That's the main office. We have a satellite here in Aliani.
Oh, really? I thought we were going to get the main, and the satellite was going to go over there. Oh, that's interesting. Okay. We'll leave that for further conversations with Cataraugus County itself. But my other question was about the Mobile Command Center there for the Child Advocacy Center. Do we got funding for that? Did I understand?
Yes, we got $50,000 for that.
So people often ask about that. You know, they see the one bag or whatever parked over there, and that's, most of the time, we get enough funding to cover all the expenses with that.
Right. And that was questionable at one point in time. We didn't have that in the Budget Officer level because the funding was questionable, and Don was able to secure the information for the $50,000. So we put it in at this level.
I know it's useful for them, but I mean, in case of any other emergency, that's also possible.
And that's a spend and receive, so that's a grant where if you don't spend any, you don't get any, but if you spend some, you can apply for the grant pack. Yep. The next one was in Economic Development. It was, we created a new account, and it didn't roll over into the Budget Officer level as well. So that's that entry to put that $100,000, $138,000 back in. The next one is the startup money for the EDO. So that money will come from the fund balance for economic development. So that doesn't have any bearing on the levy. It's coming from that money that you set aside for economic development.
Did you mention it to the IDA about, I'm kicking in, the meeting is next Thursday?
All right. Use your microphones, if you would, please.
I agree with Dwyer. I'd like to see the IDA pony up that money instead of the county government doing it. That's what the IDA is supposed to be about, and they certainly have plenty of funds now. Thank you.
Okay, the next one was a change that the Veterans Office wanted. They had already gotten a computer this year, so they wanted to use that money for fees for trainings, et cetera. So we just switched that around. The next line item is the increase to fund balance. $250,000 of that is the EDO fund balance. $250,000 is the extra we needed to cover the MTS contract. So that puts us that we used $11 million in fund balance. $10 million, 250 is from general, 500 is from solid waste, and 250 is from the economic development. The next line item was the fringes that were associated with the positions in the Sheriff's Department for the cooks that we moved to the contract. The next line is the interfund transfer that is needed from General Fund to CSH. I see I've got a typo there. That is to cover the increase in the stop-loss insurance that Bobby came to you a couple weeks ago about. So that was $446,000 that we have to take from General to do that. The next one is in the fund exactly that we have to make that change. So overall, we were able to have a $70,000 reduction in the levy, which put us under the cap for 2026. And the summary sheet was attached in your agenda so that you can see... And it looks like the rate is incorrect on this. This actually is the wrong, I must have sent Brenda the wrong thing. I'm sorry. This is from 2020, so you don't want to look at that.
The good old days.
Yeah, the good old days.
Yeah.
That must, that's the wrong one. I have the correct one here. That, I think that whole spreadsheet had all of them, Brenda. You probably just didn't pick up the 26. Had a tab specifically for 26. This one looks like it's from 2020. Pardon me?
At the last one, we have it. It's just the last one.
Oh, okay. There was printed more than one? Okay. Sorry about that.
It's multiple years, so...
Oh, yeah, I see 2021. Yeah, there should have only been a 2026 in there. You'll see that one. Yeah, okay. There, the packet contains more than what you need. It's the last page of the summary. It says Exhibit A, Summary of 2026 Budget by Funds. And at the very bottom, you should see the real property tax levy is $31,743,541, like it's left of that green box. The tax rate is $12, and the average tax rate across the county is $12.22 a thousand, which puts us, according to the state, $60,283 under the cap.
Okay. Does Board have any questions, comments, concerns about any of the proposed amendments before we start talking about any of our own?
We will talk to the sheriff about the $45,000 now in one.
When we, so I've got the Order of Operations right here. We could move this forward as presented, and then it goes to the full board. When it gets to the full board, we could amend this, right?
Correct.
On the floor. You know, so if we find that we do need to make a change to the sheriff's, what is it, general supplies?
Yeah.
Line, we can do it at that point?
Correct.
Right? Okay. Mr. Bissette?
Thank you, sir. Concern, looking forward, I know this is a, legislator Ru has mentioned in the past about the use of the reserve funds, and increasing that is a very big concern of mine also. If we could really learn to tighten our belts a little bit better throughout the budget process for each department, and find out what's really important for this county, because we can't keep going, taking all this money out of the reserve funds, or we'll be back to where we were 10 years ago, or whatever it was. So that's my concern.
And I will note, there are other options that you can take if you don't want to use that much out of fund balance. We have information available on salaries. Jan mentioned salaries at the last meeting. We have done some homework on that. There, we believe there is money available in some of that. It probably won't come up to what you want, but it could be looked at to drop the amount of money that we use from fund balance. We just took it from fund balance. We weren't sure where you wanted to go with other positions that weren't offered up by the department, so. And there's a lot of vacant positions that are funded, that are currently in this budget. Like I had mentioned before, we kept them in the departments because employees have been such a hot topic in trying to staff departments, so we left them there. Really, all the budget contains is those that they gave up themselves, this adjustment.
Yeah. Just remember that it's like the vacancies we have that we've funded. If you take those out now, you won't get them to go back into fund balance at the end of the year, which is what saves us every year. It has saved us every year, but it's getting closer and closer to not saving us, so.
Charlie?
Terry. Last year, you used $10 million out of the fund balance, I believe?
This particular year, you have $10 million in there for '24.
So the last full year that you had the total accounting for, how much of that was put back into the fund balance?
That was $6.3 million for '24, and we were within $82,000 of using it.
Okay.
So we were close.
Yep.
But we didn't.
Just so everybody can hear where we were, how we're doing it. Thank you.
That budget wasn't nearly as tight as this one.
Correct. We think we're on track this year, right now, the way things looked, running our balance sheets, that we may tap into that $10 million we have budgeted this year, but we might not take the whole thing. So I'm assuming there will be some that rolls back into fund balance from this year. I think it's safe to say there will be some.
When do you get, when do you know that for sure? March?
We won't know that until we'll do preliminary year end. Well, I won't be doing those, but yes, someone will be doing those. But there will be doing preliminary. Departments will turn in some of their stuff in January. The posting will happen on our end in February. We'll begin to do the annual report in March. That is not due until April 30th. So we will not know exactly until April 30th. We'll have a good idea mid-April, but we won't really have any firm numbers until after April 30th, when we submit to the state.
Deb? Microphone, please.
I want to go back to the fund balance. So you're saying we might get $6 million back after this one? On an average, over the last, say, 10 years, we've always gotten some money back from our fund balance. Can you give us an average, just that we know that?
I can't. I do have that, but off the top of my head, I do not have that information. I only know that we have not really tapped into the fund balance that we've used as a budget adjustment.
And that's, I guess, the point that I want to make, is that we do recoup that every year.
We definitely try to. I mean, you know, there's a lot that goes on to make that happen, but we have been lucky. I'll just say that. We've been lucky. And we're very conservative about that.
Lucky or smart?
Well, I'll take the smart. No, I'm not saying that really.
Proactive.
I think we have been lucky. We have been able to cover any kind of disaster or emergency that has come upon us by good budgeting. And obviously, that takes a lot of time to understand and know where you're going with your budget. And we have done a good job. But, you know, when I first started, we were $5, $6 million in the hole. And, you know, we are not that anymore. We have done well. And that's really just from conservative budgeting and having something that you can invest and make money. I mean, we've, you know, we've recouped funding that has, you know, we're putting in $3.2 million in interest that's not part of your levy. So that saved you that much off that levy. And, you know, and we're still conservative in what we hang on to. I mean, we're not, we have two months, basically. And we make sure we have two months' worth of spending available to us. If everything dried up, the state and federal government dried up, we have enough money to get us through two months. Excuse me.
And that's a rule of thumb, is it not, that we keep at least two months?
It is a rule of thumb, yeah.
And this is not just, this is so anyone listening in, that it is a rule of thumb that we should be keeping at least two months' worth of...
Correct.
Yeah.
And we've been fortunate enough, too, that we have never had to borrow for the closing of the landfill. From the beginning, when we closed those cells, it was fiscally responsible to put aside money, and we have done that. This budget will take the rest 500 that we have, so at some point, you'll have to look at where we end '25 and put probably more aside in that assigned fund balance for solid waste. But usually, you know, a couple million dollars will last you four years in the closure of that landfill. So we have been fortunate to be paid for that as we go. And we, you know, we have been fortunate to do the economic development, committed fund balance, and we've paid for all our equipment with funds we have, and haven't borrowed for equipment since probably 2003 or, you know, I know we had some bonds when I first came on that were all for just machinery and equipment, and we don't have any of that, bridges. We paid for everything.
Just a note, when I first came down, they weren't putting the money into that that they were supposed to be putting in. So we got after it and made sure that they started putting it in, so we ended up not having to borrow. So it was a good thing.
Terry?
Yes.
Back up just a little bit. With MTS, the million dollars that we have to put into that, how many years we've been doing that? Just a couple of years now?
I think four, three or four? No more than three.
Right.
And this is the...
Do we get any funding on that?
We do not. And this is the first year that we've ever really budgeted it. We have gone by contracts, and every time you've approved a contract, whether it be three months or six months, we've done a budget adjustment from fund balance to do that. This year, the goal was to put it in, but you do not have a contract with them, correct?
It's in process.
It's in process. So you don't really have a contract, but we wanted to make sure you had the money in there to pay for it. So that's why we made sure we got that back in.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Terry, the sheriff's concerns about overtime, he came and expressed to the board. Did you or Chris have an opportunity to sit with him and get that hashed out?
We did not. I was, I was gone over the holiday, so I didn't, I was not... I was, I was gone over the holiday, so I didn't, I was not here, and I don't believe you did. I haven't, no. Right.
Jan, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to first thank Terry and Chris. I know this is a lot of work, and it's a big budget, and you did a great job, and I think you addressed a lot of the concerns that several of us had. I think it's not the time to sit back and say, hey, we're in good shape. We, we need to keep being smart and keep being aware that we can't keep pulling from fund balance, because sometime, we're going to end up having to use fund balance. So, I think we just need to be careful, but thank you. Great job.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Chairman? Mr. Abey?
Yeah, I also would like to thank Terry and Carissa. This, Terry, when you presented the different categories, I could see your concern and, and how much effort you've put into this. You could just see it on your face that you're going through, and I just want to tell you how much I appreciate your work and Carissa's work on this, because this was tough, no lie. Going back just one second to the moving of the salary money around for the sheriff's office, I, I do think there's going to need to be some hand-holding in order to make that happen, so if, if, if you guys don't mind meeting with the sheriff, just to make sure that gets done correctly, because you guys are the experts in their law enforcement. They don't move money around, so if you could help them out, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? I know Brenda did send you ladies an email about the board's desire to cut their conference line. Is that something we can add as an amendment to this today, so it gets into the resolution? And that was a reduction. I don't have the account number.
Yeah, I don't have it either. Yeah.
But it was a reduction from thirty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand?
A ten-ten-point-four-oh-five, I believe.
And instead of those conferences, we're just going to watch YouTube videos and learn So, now's the opportunity, folks, if there are any, let's, do we need a motion or a second to add that, or is that just something at this point, we can just add?
Well, if I had, have a suggestion, you have a Ways and Means meeting. No, you don't have a Ways and Means meeting today. Sorry. I was going to suggest that you give me time to change that, talk to the sheriff, maybe that ten grand can go back in his supplies, and you only take thirty-five from his supplies. And then I would modify the MOE, so that you had a good MOE going forward, but you don't really have a Ways and Means today, so.
County administrator, any advice?
I, I liked what the treasurer suggested. I thought the cuts were, were decent cuts. I know the sheriff has expressed some concern. I am kind of looking back at the invoices coming out of that account, and there is some play in there. There, I mean, certainly, there are some jail supplies, but they are not all inmate supplies. There's a lot of other miscellaneous charges, some of which are attributed to the cooks, such as uniforms, I think, were coming out of there for some reason, when they probably should have been out of a different line anyways.
Well, and I think there were some kitchen supplies.
Yeah.
There was some kitchen supplies in there that were to be covered by the contract, so I think that's why that account was targeted.
And I think you just need to keep in mind that the budget is a plan, that we need to pass this plan so that we can tax people appropriately to get the money that we need, but it's a living document. We do budget adjustments throughout the year. When there's not enough money in the correct account, but there's more in another account, we make those adjustments on a regular basis, because it is just a plan, and things do change. So, I am not too worried about exact amounts in the general supply of one particular department if I know overall, we can cover the needs of, of those operations.
So, I appreciate that, but I know department heads are going to say, that's fine, but when I come in here looking for a budget adjustment mid-year, and legislator Burdick says, is this budgeted, and I have to be the one that says, no, it's not budgeted, it comes down on the department head and not on the budget officer? So, I, I understand where the sheriff's coming from. He wants to be insured that his expenses are budgeted for appropriately, but I get what you're saying, too, that, you know, this is, we don't need to get so granular that we worry about, and I'm not minimizing forty-five thousand dollars, but, you know.
Well, in my, my pep speech, because pep talked to the department heads on a consistent basis, to all of them, when we have our department head meetings, this, this is not their budget. These are their estimates. Their estimates may be high, they may be low, that, that's their best guess. A lot of that is dependent on their past trends and what their expectations are for the coming year. It's not my budget either. It's my tentative, my, my plan, based on what I know as well. It's, it's your budget. You guys make the decision, and they need to live within it. So, that's my, what I tell them on a consistent basis. We appreciate their input, but at the end of the day, there's only fifteen people that, that pass a budget, and that's you guys.
Any legislators?
Do you want to add the, the clerk of the board to this?
Yeah.
And adjust that general supplies, or do you just want to let it ride? I guess that's what I need to know.
I guess just drop clerk of the board down.
Okay.
And just call it good.
Okay. So, then, well.
You want to put it somewhere. I get it.
Well, no, the reason is, is that doesn't change my overall number.
Right.
Which then I got to go back and start over again to change that ten grand.
Yeah, so, yeah, we can, all right.
So, if, if I could propose an amendment, I would propose that you take a ten-ten-point-four-oh-five, which is the clerk of the board conference expense, change that from thirty-five thousand to twenty-five thousand, which is a reduction of ten grand. And then you go down to the sheriff's one, where it says thirty-one fifty-point-four-oh-eight, and then you change that from forty-five thousand to?
Ten thousand.
To ten thousand.
Okay. We don't need-
And then that's a thirty-five thousand. It doesn't change the overall number of your levy at all. It just makes that adjustment, so.
Works for me. Any objections? Okay. All right. Any legislators have any other amendments to the tentative that they would like to propose? Mr. Ricky?
Terry, you remember, we had our talk a couple of weeks ago, the three legislators in your group? You said you'd look into the travel, training expense, and mileage on all the departments, what it was. Could we get some cuts? Chairman was good enough to do ten out of just this little group. I think we could cut a lot more.
We did look at that. We ran reports on that. I don't know where, we ended up, we did not have any conversations with departments, I can tell you that, but I didn't know if you had any. Yeah. I mean-
It's just, when I looked through it, just me not being an accountant, I looked like the past two years, this current year, and then what's budgeted for next year, and it seems like they're all on the, you know, a lot of them are on the high end, like you could take the low. It's just like, I don't think we're going to miss a beat in this room here with taking ten thousand out, because there's enough in the mileage or the, the other, the other lines. It's still going to be the same. I just, that's why, I think there's some savings there, maybe these, there's a lot of online courses.
I, I think there's some savings there. I, I agree with legislator Ricky. I don't have the exact information that would allow us to make the budget cuts right now, because we'd have to go department by department and figure out how much of that is mandated training. And we can do that, certainly, if you want, before we do the final budget, to offer another amendment. But the other thing you could do is just throttle spending throughout next year as well, and we could say no unnecessary travel. We could say hiring freezes and other things, and that would allow you not to spend all the money you budgeted, which would then have a savings to your fund balance for the next year. You'd have more to roll over. So, there are other things that you can do beyond the budget cuts to control your spending next year that will help overall, which I, I think you should do. I would highly recommend that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'd like to see.
Okay. So, if that is the consensus of the board, and John's request is what you'd like us to do, we can do that. We can also look deeper into the salaries, if that's what you want. If you want, in addition to this, we could bring another MOE for another adjustment to next Wednesday's meeting. You'd still have time to get that in before you approve a budget on the seventeenth. So, if that's the charge that you'd like to make to us, then we can do that.
Jan?
Along with that, I guess, is, I think it was a little over a million dollars in unfilled positions currently that we figured out. I don't know if we're to that point yet where we need a hiring freeze. I would have to look at your recommendation, but if we just even waited six months to fill any of those unfilled positions, we're going to save quite a bit of money, and you wouldn't have to adjust the budget. You wouldn't have to change anything in the budget, because that money's just going to be there and, and hold over. So, it's easier to do that, I would think, than cut them, because you don't want to cut them completely, because if then they do have to fill them, you've got it there. But I think if you, even six months didn't fill all those, you know, it's a million dollars that's out there, you're not going to, but even half a million, if you do six months, that's a big chunk of money.
Right.
And it's not hurting anybody.
And that could be the board's, that could be the board's decision. Our analysis took active employees that are currently on the books, and that's a couple months old that we did, so we would have to check back with departments to see if they had filled some of those positions that were vacant when they first did their budget. But I believe there is money in salaries that, you know, you guys can decide on what to do with that, but we, like I said, we did not move that this year. We left that in the department's budget for any vacant filled funded, vacant funded positions, so we can certainly take a look back at that as well. You know, we've got a good analysis on that. We just didn't bring that forward. And if, if that's your goal, to try to eliminate that two-fifty that we had to take out of general, additional general fund balance, then we can shoot for two-fifty to be our goal. You know, maybe that's a reasonable goal to come up with, if that's what you want, is another budget adjustment.
My, you know, my preference would be, I think, what I heard Jan saying, which was, leave the salaries alone, but as a board, you know, whenever these get filled, that's our opportunity to determine, finally, whether or not we're going to expend those funds, whether they were budgeted or not. So, if it takes something like a hiring freeze to give us the discipline we need to be able to say we can't afford to do that right now, then we should probably look at that, but I don't, I don't think for the sake of the budget, it's needed to make another amendment. I think John is, John's on the right track with conference and training expenses. I do want to, if you guys are going to go back to department heads and, and ask them to look at those lines, will you please express to them that the board recognizes the value in training and the value in professional development? And we, we don't want these people just to, you know, put their head in the sand for the next twelve months. We want them to receive the trainings they need, the education they need, because there's return on those investments, in my opinion. But if there's room, if there's room for saving, then let's save, but not at, not at the cost of not giving our employees what they need in terms of that development. Charlie, then, Mike?
Thank you, chairman. I agree a hundred percent with you, and the talk that we had with Terry and Carissa in that one meeting, I mentioned previously about, it's incumbent upon the department heads to realize, do we need to send two people, three people, four people? Can we cut that back to, you know, one or two and still make it, you know, worthwhile, for what you said? Professional development is extremely important, and, but can they take a county vehicle compared to their own vehicle and save the mileage type of thing? I think that's something that Carissa and everybody else will have to look at also, but I've said it a few times now, their department heads really have to take the lead on this and try to be fiscally responsible for all, everything we can, so thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, chairman. Yes, I agree with most of the comments being said here today about being, maintaining a fiscally vigilant position as, as board members and as a board as a whole. The, some training, I'm assuming, is required training, so that, and you may not be able to cut that, but the other thing you want to keep in mind is that the state and New York's financial picture is not, not very good. And when I first came on the board, they, all of a sudden, they just cut all their, their funding, did away with some of it, reduced the amounts and, and other revenue streams, and so we may be up against it going forward, so we want to keep that in mind. I think we certainly should delay filling any positions for a reasonable amount of time to try to stay ahead of that.
Thank you, John.
Yeah, I just want, for the record, to let people know, I'm not anti-training or education. It's just, since COVID, there's been so much offered online. I'd like them to look, see if they can find it online, stay home and do it. Stay here. That's always a choice.
I want to, I want to-
And I will say to Charlie's, to Charlie's comment about the department heads, I've had a couple of conversations with some of the bigger departments, and they have spoken to their staff about revamping the conference attendance and train the trainer, basically, is what you mentioned, and I have mentioned that to a couple of big departments, so it is in the works, I think, in their mind about it. I think today's conversation will reiterate that, but, yeah. You're welcome.
Okay, so it sounds like we're asking if you could take another circle back on that, maybe come with a separate resolution to amend that addresses conference lines? Anything else, John, other than conference lines?
No, that was the speaker.
Okay. And are people comfortable leaving salaries where they are with the understanding that we'll be responsible adults and address that when we get in the new year about whether it's a hiring freeze, or whether we're asked department heads to pause three, six months, or whatever? Is that good enough for everybody? Okay, any other budget amendments that anyone would like to propose? You can spend money, too, right, in a budget amendment?
You spend a lot.
I'm afraid to ask area if he's got a budget amendment.
I'll give my mouth shut.
All right. Okay, so, with the change, did we have, I don't think we have a motion or a second to advance this, but, so, everybody have an understanding of the change related to our conference line? Or do you want to do that?
Do it in the next one?
Would that be easier for you?
If that's fine, I mean, we can do it in the next one.
Why don't we do that, just so it's cleaner?
And we'll clean up the other ones.
Okay. All right.
No amendment to this right now.
Okay.
You'll take care of that in the next one.
All right. Do you need a motion?
We need a motion on this one.
Okay. Dwight makes the motion. Legislator Hanchett seconds. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved.
I would like to give you one more bit of information that I think everyone is always interested in, but with this change, there are still fourteen towns that will be above the average rate, so I will provide that when we get to the certain point, but that's just based on this adjustment. There's still fourteen that will be above the average, so I just wanted to mention that.
Who's the big winner?
Who's the big winner? Well, you know, that is something I did not look at, but there is one, it would be, Clarksville would be my guess. Yes, it's Clarksville, eighteen dollars and ten cents. Their equalization rate is fifty-two percent.
Oh, that's the big loser.
Yeah. It's unfortunate, so. They are, Elma's rate is, yeah, Elma has a ninety-nine-point-five percent equalization rate, so their rate per thousand is nine-point-four-five.
Under ten percent.
Yeah.
Unheard of around here.
So, Terry, can you explain why those towns are above the rate?
The revales, basically, a revale is what's doing it. There are currently twelve towns that are under seventy percent, and that's a lot. Five of those towns are under sixty percent, so they're the fifties, and then you've got seven towns that are under seven percent, so, yeah, that's the big culprit, is a revale. As much as they're painful, they are meant to try to equalize the rate across the county, and without them, you can't equalize it, so.
Terry?
Yes.
If their revale is lower than ninety percent or eighty percent, whatever, does that affect their ability to get grants and everything else?
Um, you know, I don't know that. I don't know, I don't believe that equalization rates have a bearing on grants, but it's possible that, depending on a certain type of grant, it might, but I don't know that for sure. I can't answer that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, on to the next adventure. I think this one's you, too, isn't it?
Yeah.
I just like-
Mr. Healy?
Treasurer Ross, to point out that we don't, we don't have any control over that
Treasurer Ross, to point out that we don't, we don't have any control over that at all with the.
We do not have control over the equalization rates. It's a town function.
Right. And the assessor, their town assessors, and the town government are responsible for all that. And we have to live with it.
Correct. We accept their assessments, as does everyone else, village and school as well. But it's a town, it's a town, basically, a town responsibility for the assessing unit. They are the assessing unit. And unfortunately, it's a financial burden to the towns as well, so it's not, it doesn't come cheap ever.
Chairman, Chairman, I'm, input there is, the state is the one that actually makes the final decision on what the equalization rate is, even though it's the town's responsibility to do the revale. The state has the final word in where it ends up. So, right or wrong, right or wrong, that's the way it goes.
Right. They end up having to approve the work that goes forward on that.
Okay.
Jan, you can help me. Didn't the state used to pay us so much when we did a revale? And then that disappeared along with everything else?
Yeah, it was an incentive to do a revale. They paid you so much a parcel, which helped a lot. And then they did away with it. So now there's no incentive and it's a, like you said, it's very expensive to do a revale. And that's part of the reason, or probably the main reason, most of the towns that are way under assessed, their equalization rates are so low, is the reason they're not doing it is because it's just very expensive.
Well, the state also paid for their own parcels. Is that correct, even the ones that weren't?
What are you referring to, the state?
State-owned properties.
The state pays on state-owned property.
Right.
They pay, you know, we get state aid payments on property taxes for the state. They just don't, you know, they pay, not on everything.
Right.
Yes, there are some exemptions.
Some exemptions.
Yep.
They cut that and then the general, whatever they call it, what's called just state aid, that thing's been frozen forever.
County used to get aid money. We used to get aid money and the carrot for the assessment was so much a parcel, and it really did help the towns when they did that, when they offered the carrot, like if you're going to do a revale, we'll give you X amount per parcel. And they took that away. I mean, I bet you that's been 25 years. It's been a long time since they took the carrot away. Huh? Yeah, dating myself.
Okay, onwards. Bond.
Okay, so the next thing I have is to be prepared for the contracts that you passed at last meeting and the meeting before, for the construction of the new facility at the, on County Road 20. So the new public works facility. We have an $8 million bond resolution in place now, and that will obviously not cover a substantial portion of the project itself. So this, this was prepared by our bond council. We have been in discussions with bond council based on the estimates that were received for the entire project. That includes everything out there to make this facility work and be up and running. So that is a total of an estimated about $45 million. So we have an $8 million one on the books now that we can borrow as a ban, and we can phase this in. So we need this $37 million one so that we can go out when the construction really begins, which will be sometime probably in '26. So we will ban that as well, and then we will not fully bond until the entire project is completed and we know what we've spent. And then we will do a bond for what we've spent, and that will be a 30-year, 25, 30-year bond. So those are some of the numbers that we had given to you guys in advance. But this is the second part of that. This is getting the 37 million, which will complete the entire estimate for the project. This includes not only the construction. Remember, the pre-planning resolution that we passed was so that we could capture all the engineering and design and all that pre, you know, that dirt work and everything that was done before. So we have that in place, we just have not borrowed on it yet. It is still valid, we just have not borrowed on that yet. This one will cover the rest of it, and this also is for any related site improvements, infrastructure, furnishings, equipment, machinery, apparatus, and any incidental improvements. So this ends up bringing back everything that you're going to need for that facility, including the additional infrastructure. So that's what we're looking at today, is just asking for a resolution for this $37 million bond project.
Okay, let's get a motion first. Thank you, Dwight. Thank you, Charlie. Alright, discussion, Gretchen, then Dwight.
The one question I have is, we talked at one point putting four or five million in this bond or ban to take care of the issues out at the jail, the roof and those things. That is not.
That is not part of this. That is, that will be a separate, we don't have really bids or quotes or anything on that. We do not have that. We have had some discussions internally about that, about trying to pay for that as we go, depending on what gets done and what the quote comes in, as, so that you don't have to have another bond out there for repairs, because that's basically what you're doing. Although that is an option, and you might have to do that, but if that can be phased in, we might be able to pay for some of that as we go. So that's just something we have to look at when we get to that point.
Alright, thank you.
Would there be any aid for that?
For the Public Safety Building?
Yes.
I'm not, I'm not completely sure. I doubt it. You know, they gave us some incentives when we borrowed money for that jail. They had an interest recovery, and we get approximately 100 grand a year, maybe? Oh, it's gone down to about 50. It was escalated at the beginning and dropped down. We probably get $50,000 on, off interest. And there was, we took advantage of some MBBA bonds and some ARRA bonds at that point in time that gave us some additional interest deduction. But those, they're weaned off. That building will be paid for soon, so.
Thank you.
That's weaned off at this point.
Dwight?
Yeah, my concern is the way this is postured. It says for the new public works facility, and we're talking about $37 million. DPW building does not need the tower, the tank on the hill. We do not need a facility large enough to handle the sewage from a development at the crossroads. So I guess my proposal would be, the bond resolution request is for a new public works facility as well as economic development in that crossroads area, or however you want to put it, 51. As this is shown up here, it's like, our cost for the DPW building is 23, 24 million, 25 million. It is not the 37 million. So these are things that we're spending money on economic development, which is a good thing. I think it's, I think that's the right way to do it. But just to note, we don't need the tank on the hill for our DPW facility, and we don't need that other stuff that's included in the, and also there is grant money that we have gotten for parts of this project. So, but, I want to be safe with the amount of money, but I want to make sure that everybody understands, our DPW building is not $37 million. Thank you.
John?
Just on the slight chance we spent 35 million instead of 37, or do you have, if it only costs 35 to do all of it, do we still have to spend 37? Or can you rewrite the bond?
No, not at all. We don't rewrite the bond. What we do is we ban up to the point of $45 million. We would have the ability to ban up to the point of $45 million for everything we do at the S-curves, basically. So if you don't, if you don't use all that money before you long-term bond it, you would, there would be a repayment of the ban, you'd pay off a ban, so that you're only bonding what you really spent. So that's what you do for the long term, and that would be the 30-year. Up until that point, you're banning at different levels. You're going to ban 8 million, then you're going to ban 37 million. And if you don't spend all that, you're going to pay off some of that on the other bans as you can. So, yeah, there's an opportunity to not borrow the full 45 million. Ban, to bond the full 45 million.
Aye.
Yeah, just one comment. Appreciate Mr. Fan's comments on the subject, but I think we're forgetting that for the water tower also, now we got, you know, we can either grow, hopefully, there's one way, in a positive direction instead of a negative, growing in a negative direction or, and development in that area seems to be the most positive solution for any true economic growth, especially from outsiders investing either directly or indirectly. The fire towers, your fire, water tower, I understand is also for fire suppression. And I'm not sure, it's all engineered, isn't it? I think that's probably part of the engineering for the DPW building, too, is to make sure that there's enough water available in case there's fires and friendship at the same time. It's, so I think it's all part of the same plan, and I'm going to support it as it is, both DPW and economic development. Thank you.
Okay.
Gretchen?
I guess what I, I think it would be a good idea, and I don't know if legally we can, if it changes this too much, to put in there that it is for the DPW and for economic development. Because I do hear people saying, you know, we want to see investment in economic development so it will help with things. So I don't know if that changes this legally or not, but I don't, as not a legal person, it doesn't seem like too much of a push to change it. Maybe it does.
Okay, well, just to explain the title, the title is exactly the same title we used for the $8 million. That's why it's called the Public Works Facility, and that has all the same dynamics of the location. It does not matter that if it is infrastructure, and this all contains infrastructure. Okay. So I believe that the title is correct. I believe that that encompasses all that area down there, and that is what you passed in '24 for the $8 million. But I would like to request an executive session, if I could, please.
Would anyone care to make a motion in our executive session for?
For the discussion of financing, and I don't know what that line item is on your little. Number six.
Medical, financial, credit, employment, history of a corporation.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay. Who made the motion? Thank you, John.